You know, that's the automatic statement.
So if you take your seats, we'll get started. We'd like to welcome you all to our Vista City Council this evening. This is a consolidated meeting of the city council, the Buena Sanitation District, and the Community Development Commission. And we'll begin the meeting this evening by having the city clerk affirm that we're all here.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Okay, thank you. We're very happy to have with us tonight Deacon Loy Wong of St. Francis Vasisi, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then if you would remain standing for the invocation.
I pray to the face of the United States of America. And to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, whom thy name be said. Let us pray. Almighty and merciful God, you are indeed the creator, the living God who is the way, the truth, and the life. You are the only begotten one who has the power to heal all affliction and to raise up the dead, and the power to grant eternal life. You continue to fill our hearts with everlasting joy, hope, and peace, especially during the last week of every December and the first day of the New Year's. You are the source of all our being, the ghost of every noble and evil. We praise your holy name. We give you sign for our nation, and we pray that you will grant our leaders of all levels, especially our Vista City Mayor and all his assistants who lead us. Grant them the wisdom, understanding, and insight that they may steer our nation in the ways of peace. We pray for our people that we may learn to live together in an abiding spirit of goodwill. We thank you for our service, women and men, who are living for, fighting for, and dying for this land we love with all our hearts. Be merciful to us, oh Almighty God. Watch over us, protect us, and grant that this prayer service may increase our knowledge of you, love for you and love for our human beings who are sacred, whose dignity is invaluable. We ask you, oh merciful Lord, to sanctify this new civic center to its special use and bless us so that we may live this worship with choice, inspiration, encouragement, and determination to praise you in all things and to attain everlasting reward for this well done and for a life well lived. Amen. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any items to be deleted or any additions to the agenda?
No, Mayor, there are no additions or deletions.
Okay, we did not have a closed session prior to this meeting, so there will be no report, and there are no presentations, so we'll go right straight to the consent calendar. The consent calendar includes items that can be acted upon with one motion that are mostly ministerial in nature. And so I'll ask the members of city council, are there any items that you'd like to remove? Mr. Campbell? C-10. Okay, any others? Mr. Gronky?
How about C-9?
C-9. Okay, and are there any others? And I received none. Did I receive one from the audience? C-8. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the remaining portion of the consent calendar?
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Please cast your votes. Okay, and the remaining portion of the consent calendar was adopted unanimously. Okay, then the next item will be C-8, which is an always stop on West Los Angeles Drive at California, West California Avenue. And we have one person that has pulled this from the audience. Does the council wish to hear a report from the staff first, or do you want to hear from the individual that pulled the item? Okay, Alejandro Sanchez, if you please come forward. There is no presentation that's going to be made. We were just going to respond to your question.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Alejandro Sanchez. I live in Townside. I just find out that there is going to be a proposal, or I don't even know if this is going to be indeed something that the planning commission is going to implement on West California Avenue in West Los Angeles. In my opinion, this is absurd, just to think to have stops there all the way. This is the worst of the worst that I've ever seen in the planning commission. We facing big problems with the traffic conditions every single morning. I'm pretty sure that none of you guys live in the neighborhood like myself. I do live there. I know how the traffic conditions are every day, so it'll be catastrophic for many of us. Many of those families have to drive their kids, you know, to school, and there's big lines and everything. And I don't, I don't even want to think how these stops are going to impact those families, in particular myself, because I'm driving all the time in that area. So I don't know what is the main idea. I just read it, you know, the U package outside, so I didn't have not much time to make a research about the proposition, for the proposal. But I think it's ridiculous, and I hope that you guys don't even consider about that. One of the things that we have to consider is how to improve the conditions in our Townside area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the city council? Mr. Campbell?
I'd ask a question of staff to respond to that, because I think we still, we have three of the four legs are covered now by stop signs, are they not?
Two of the three legs.
Two of the three legs, and so you're trying to cover the other two legs?
The other leg, it's a three-way leg at the intersection.
And so what impacts do you perceive will occur there?
Well, this, maybe it would be good if we could do a presentation, and we got some maps if you would like to see that. We can go through the whole thing, if, maybe it would be easier than answering a series of questions, if that's suitable to you. Okay. Sam Hesedin will be making the presentation for us. He's the traffic engineer for us.
Good evening. So this is a location map of the intersection. It is a three-legged intersection, West Los Angeles Drive sort of continues, but it turns. And then the other leg is West California Avenue on the bottom there, and two legs are controlled by stop signs. The one part of West Los Angeles Drive and then the West California Avenue approach. So we received a request for an always stop at the intersection from one of the residents in the area. And the primary concern that was expressed was with pedestrian and traffic safety, specifically children walking to and from the school nearby. So we conducted an evaluation in accordance with the established standards that we normally use. And for that, we gathered data on the traffic volumes, vehicular volumes, pedestrians, bikes. And we found that there's a heavy, heavy pedestrian presence in the area, crossing all legs, including the uncontrolled approach of West Los Angeles Drive. And one of the favorite, or favored, conditions that we found for this type of control, which is an always stop, is that the traffic volumes were comparable on all the approaches, which is the appropriate type of condition for, to control all approaches so that one direction doesn't feel that they're stopping for very little traffic. And overall, you know, after we plugged in all the numbers of the traffic volumes, pedestrians, other conditions, we found that the intersection exceeds the threshold for the installation of an always stop. And that again just shows the vicinity map where the proposed stop sign would be on the uncontrolled approach of West Los Angeles Drive. This is some pictures of the intersection. This is the uncontrolled approach, West Los Angeles. This would be looking eastbound. And this is looking from that uncontrolled approach, looking to the north towards West Los Angeles Drive. This is looking in the other direction, to the right, basically, from West Los Angeles Drive onto West California. And this is one of the controlled approaches, which would be West California, would be looking northbound. This is looking from that approach of California Avenue onto the uncontrolled approach of West Los Angeles Drive. And this is the other direction that's controlled, and this would be looking southbound. And this is, would be looking left from that approach onto West Los Angeles. So based on the evaluation that we conducted and the fact that the intersection met the threshold for the always stop, a recommendation would be to approve the installation of an always stop.
I'd also like to point out that the traffic commission approved this on December 2nd by unanimous vote.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
A question. When you put in a signal like that, a stop like that, do you research on where there's more traffic crossing there when they're going to school?
Yeah, we actually, typically we count four hours of the day, where we count all the movements at the intersection, vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, and we pick the peak periods, and in this case, we pick the morning and afternoon periods where, that would contain that school rush. So we did capture that in our counts.
Let me put you in the spot, but what, from which direction is there more children going to school there?
We found actually that the uncontrolled approach of West Los Angeles, maybe I can go to the map. That the, that west leg, and I can't point to it, West Los Angeles Drive that's uncontrolled, that receives most of the pedestrians, so they're crossing, they're walking along West Los Angeles, California, and crossing the uncontrolled approach.
Now, when you put a signal like that in there, a lot of times, you know, they put the double, was it the double lines all the way across and have pedestrian. Would you be doing that by any chance? Because then that shows, because there's some area, you don't put it on all three sides, correct?
You mean a crosswalk? Mark it? It depends on the intersection. It could be one leg, it could be all legs or none. In this case, we probably wouldn't mark it just because sidewalks do not exist at this point.
But yet, but yet they're crossing in a certain area, a majority of them are crossing in one area going to school.
Sure.
So wouldn't you consider putting a line across for pedestrians?
And we would, and actually, there's a project that will put in a sidewalk on West Los Angeles, and I think once we put the sidewalks in, we will mark the area with a crosswalk. Although whether, you know, even though that it's not marked, it's still designated for pedestrians since it's an intersection, but it's something we will consider.
So you will be putting in those lines?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I might just say, I pulled item nine to talk about that sidewalk, and I can just assume, we can vote on both these at the same time, because the comments that Mel and Nik will go along with that, make it easy for everybody. But I do drive through this intersection often, and I agree with staff that the amount of traffic from just about every direction is pretty much the same. So I think it's necessary, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to go ahead and put in the crosswalks when you put in that sidewalk, because I think student safety is really the ultimate thing we want to do right here, and safety for the residents. This whole neighborhood, the Townside area, as I go through there, is just one area that people tend to walk through all the time. You just see people with strollers and young people and people going to the stores. So anything we can do to improve the safety, and again, I'll just make my comments about item nine, that I'm really glad that the city's putting in some sidewalks in that whole Townside area, because we have along that same path a couple of schools and the Boys and Girls Club, so I just think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sanchez inferred that there's going to be quite a backup of, and more difficulty for people transiting the area, which raised the question, do you anticipate by putting this proposed stop sign in, this might cause people to cut through smaller streets and other neighborhoods, portions of the neighborhood?
I don't believe so. During, there's a brief period in the morning and a brief period in the afternoon when the school is letting out, when the intersection gets congested, which is very typical of any, you know, intersection near a school. And as it is right now, it backs up on the approaches that have the stop sign anyway. So there will be probably a little bit of backup on West Los Angeles. But again, it's for the benefit of the pedestrians that cross during that brief period. The rest of the day, the traffic volumes are pretty equal, and it should serve to assign the right of way more appropriately than it is right now.
Well, I think the public safety of the children in particular overrides the consideration of people in a hurry to get someplace, so I'd move for approval of eight and nine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, so both consent calendar items eight and nine have been approved unanimously. Okay, we'll go on to item number C-10, which is the Fire Department's strategic plan. Chief Fisher?
Good evening, Mayor and council. We thought that we might go ahead and treat this item as a discussion item and present the information to you in that format so that you can, we can talk about it more and ask more questions. In 2004, the Fire Department developed its first formal strategic plan. As with most strategic plans, it was designed to provide guidance for three to five years. I'm happy to report that the plan has served us well, accomplishing approximately eighty percent of the goals and objectives. However, it's time to reevaluate where the department is and where we need to be going. So essentially, it's time for a new plan. We developed the 2009 plan much like we did in 2005 through a community-driven strategic planning process. We started out by getting input from stakeholders, both external and internal. Facilitators worked with many of the local leaders and identified what they expected from their fire department through discussion and through written surveys. The external stakeholders spent the better part of an afternoon with facilitators. These are the major program areas that the external stakeholders prioritized. There are a number of detailed expectations that come with each of these priorities that are listed within the document itself, as you may have noticed. While you might think that fire suppression would always be the top priority in all communities, that's not always the case, especially in highly industrialized cities where hazardous materials issues may rate higher than fire issues, or in older communities where emergency medical services may rate higher. As you know, strategic planning is merely a tool that can be used to help guide managers to make good decisions. A strategic plan does not replace good decision-making. Additionally, the current direction of the economy is still cloudy. So any physical components of the plan that adds cost to the operations of the department may be delayed, need to be delayed. However, I want to stress to the council that many of the items in the plan do not have an escalating physical component, and in fact, may be only process changes that would result in savings or improved efficiencies. So we begin our process essentially with five basic questions. Why do we exist? Where are we now? Where do we want to be? How do we get there? And how do we measure our progress? The first one is answered, the first question is answered in our mission statement. Essentially remains unchanged from 2005. The second question is based on a SWOT analysis, that's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and spent quite a bit of time looking at those issues. We then identify where we want to be by developing our vision and value statements, which are a part of our operating culture, and here we have our vision statement that is in the document. And we also have our value statement, which addresses our five main values: integrity, teamwork, trust, safety, and service excellence. And then finally, we identified our goals and objectives to get us where we need to be. We established goals and objectives through the SMART system, and that's goals and objectives that are specific, measurable, aggressive, results-oriented, and time-bound. With the approval of, and implementation of the department's strategic plan, we accomplish a major component of the department's accreditation process, which we will be discussing in the next item. I want to thank all of the external stakeholders for their thoughtful contributions. We got a lot of good information from that. From the internal planning process on the Fire Department for their hard work and commitment, the city manager, and of course, the city council for the support and direction you have provided us in the past and into the future. That really concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Campbell, you're the one that...
Thank you. Where do we stand on the accreditation process? Because this is something that's always, this department's always stood out as being the leader and doing a good, great job. What is the process for accreditation? Where are we, and what does it mean to us in terms of, will it, I guess where I'm going, will it reduce insurance rates in any way?
I think it's probably premature to take that step. I think that's where we're headed in the future with the accreditation process. I have, I can talk about that more, that's part of the next presentation. But the ISO, who are, who really grades cities on their insurance ratings, is looking very closely at the accreditation process and how they might integrate that process to really more accurately reflect the capabilities of the local fire department.
Okay. Chief, over the last year, I sit on the Public Safety Committee for Sandag representing Vista San Marcos Escandito Palway. And there's been a lot of conversation and in fact, presentations on collaboration, for lack of any better word than that, and see some motion in the southeast part of the county, as well as on the coastal areas, in cooperative agreements. And what sort of things are they doing that might be possible to consider here?
Well, I, without getting into a long dissertation about what they're doing down there, I would just summarize what they're doing by saying that they really have had a perfect storm in terms of being able to bring resources and administrative structure together and all of those things that have really facilitated their ability to merge the three departments down there. I'm assuming you're talking about Lemon Grove, La Mesa, and El Cajon?
Indeed, they've maintained their departments, but yet they seem to be sharing resources to the point now they have resources they've never had before.
Yes.
And it's being cost-effective, they believe. It hasn't been in process very long, has it?
No, it actually transitioned fairly quickly over a course of about a year. Ten or ten, eight or ten months, maybe a year. Again, they had openings that came along because of retirements. And it just seemed like everything that facilitated that process just happened to occur at the right time. I will tell you that the departments in North County are working on a similar process. We're taking much more, we're taking much smaller baby steps because we, we don't have the opportunities and the, and the timing that they had down there. In other words, we don't have a lot of openings, we don't have those kinds of things that we could take advantage of right now. But we are starting that process, and that is in our strategic plan to pursue that process.
Do you get good cooperation from the other chiefs in North County Dispatch? Is that a good working group? Is that our primary working group?
It's a very good working group.
And do you see unanimity on terms of, are we all having the same issues in terms of budgets, or?
No. No, there are obviously, there's quite a variation in funding capacity among the cities and the fire departments.
So are we in any unique position, high or low, in terms of?
Well, I wouldn't call it unique, but we are certainly not... Well, I wouldn't call it unique, but we are certainly not as well off as some of the other cities are. We're equal to some of the other cities, and we're probably better than some.
Because I perceive our budget just continues to, from what I understand about the economics of the region going forward, it's not going to be a good year.
No, that's probably true.
Twenty-year, Tan and Sandag at the board meeting, Mrs. Ritter and I heard that they're taking further cuts because of sales tax declines to all the agency budgets. So do you see that affecting anything you're proposing here?
Well, obviously, anything that costs money will be delayed or slowed. We may have to find an alternative way to address it. But again, many of the things that are in the strategic plan are cost savings measures or efficiency measures, and don't cost anything, they actually save us some money.
Okay. And this is rather obtuse, but it's direct. Considering the problems we've had, like the flight from Amsterdam to Detroit and unexpected events occurring that impact the public, what is our liaison with both Homeland Security and Santa Nofree specifically? Do we have planning programs in place that cause us to be able to participate if should the need occur?
Well, we have County OES that coordinates events and incidents on a county-wide basis. We do drills with Santa Nofree. There are plans in place, and those plans are exercised at least annually on various levels, but, so I would say it's there. I would not say that it is as seamless as it could be, but I think it's, but I think there's a good working relationship there and a good effort to make everything work right.
Is this an area the electors can support you if you feel you need more attention in those areas?
Well, we can always use more support.
Okay, I don't mind bringing it up in public safety. Just probably need to get better informed as to what those potential issues might be.
Yeah, we can always do better.
Okay. Does Homeland Security does sit at that table and they're taking notes, but they aren't going to take notes if nobody says anything?
That's true.
So I'm glad you participated. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Gronky.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just need to clarify our point here. We have some new fire personnel in place. We have Fire Station Five and Six and just came on with Prop L, and Fire Station One will be reopening soon. We are in a better place than we were regardless of the economic downturn. We are in a better place when it comes to the public safety in response times to our public.
If you're looking for me to agree, yes, I do. I agree. And actually, a lot of those points will be, are covered in the next presentation. We...
Clarify that for...
Absolutely.
Okay, there are no other questions. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. We'll next go to discussion item number one, which is the, excuse me, Fire Department Standards of Response Coverage. Chief Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I need to turn on my mic. Thank you. My name is Gary Fisher. I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Vista. I think I forgot to say that the first time, so for those that didn't, don't know me. Are we up yet? This is a kind of a slow-loading PowerPoint.
Mr. Johnson's promise is that in the new council chambers that it won't be slow-loading.
It won't be that slow.
And it'll work all the time, too.
I'm going to write that down.
You can count on it.
You can.
Well, I want to talk about a couple of things here on this next piece, primarily strategic standard of cover and what we've done with that. I want to, before I get too far into this, before I forget, give Captain John Blumeyer and Patrick Kelleher of Lake's Technologies a ton of credit for putting together this document. We've been working on this thing for a long time, and I believe John's out in the audience here somewhere, but anyway, so we want to talk about the standard of cover as well as the accreditation process. So over the past 36 months, plus or minus, we've been working on or focusing on putting a lot of energy into completing our standard of cover and becoming accredited. You may recall in 2005, council received and approved a Fire Department deployment analysis, also known as a standard of cover, done by Citygate and Associates. The result of that study was passage of Prop L, the construction of two new fire stations, reconstruction of Station One, and the addition of 15 personnel. And what I hope you see tonight, take away from this tonight, is the impact that it's already had on our responses. The standard of cover for you tonight is essentially an update and a refinement of that 2005 study. The 2005 study really could be described as viewing the deployment of the Fire Department resources from a 10,000-foot view, while the 2009 study is more of a 500-foot view. In other words, we've really drilled down on what we're doing. This study does not recommend any additional resources, rather focuses on our ability to identify our most significant risks and what the response should be to those risks. It validates the previous study and replicates much of the data and quantifies our response benchmarks that you'll see soon. I'd like to walk you through the process very quickly, let you know how this flowed, and then give you an idea of some of the time and effort we've spent on this. Essentially, we start off, we look at at least three years' worth of data, our call-load data and other information, and we look at any processes, laws, or ordinances that affect or impact our service delivery. Next, we conduct a risk assessment based on, and assigning low, medium, and high risk. And what you see in front of you here, the 2009 study has broken the response areas down by urban, suburban, and rural areas based on Sandag population numbers. And then we divide the area into management zones. And what you're seeing here are the management zones for fire risk. So what you're seeing, everything in green is a low fire risk, and this is for structure fires. This is not a wildland fire map. This is for structure fire. But the moderate areas in yellow, high risk is in orange, and I think you see down at the bottom of the screen there, that's down in the business park, we have some specific processes that are more hazardous than others. And then the special areas, which have unique issues that we deal with. Here's the hazmat risk. Again, gives you an idea of how we drill down into each, each one of these squares are half-mile squares. So next, we look at our resource deployment. We look at how our resources are spaced, what's the likelihood of them being available in the case of a call, and do we have enough resources in close enough proximity to the event to respond folks in a way to make, to mitigate the event. Over the past two years, as a result of the additional resources, our response times have improved dramatically and continue to improve. We've seen a 30-second average of response time improvement just so far. We're just getting started to see this, and we expect to see another 20 to 30-second improvement when Station One opens up in April and all the stations are operational. So this map shows you a four-minute response time. Let's see. I'm sorry, this map, this map shows you the areas that exceed six minutes and 30 seconds. So in 2007, before we implemented all of the changes, there are 57 areas, that's in orange and red, that had response times that exceeded six minutes and 30 seconds. Since we've implemented all the changes, in 2009, we have 19 areas that exceed six minutes and 30 seconds. That's a significant change because our call load has gone up, but our unit reliability has improved. And what we would typically see is our call load going up and our unit reliability going Here you see a map with a four-minute response time. This was from 2005 when we did the original study. Here's our map from 2009 with a four-minute response time, or travel time, rather. And we've included the border drop agencies around us to reflect the coverage. And you'll see that only on the north and eastern edges of the fire district do we not have excellent coverage, four-minute travel time coverage. And even some of that is covered, or covered with North County Fire. So we're getting really, and there's a lot of overlap in the middle that you can't see because the colors are covering one another, but we have excellent reliability at this point in our fire response. The next step, we identify the critical tasks necessary to mitigate the emergencies, and we break that into different areas such as high, moderate, and low risk again. This is a critical tasking matrix that shows how much time it takes and what the required number of personnel are on the scene of a working residential structure fire without a victim. And as you can see, we typically would take about 17 minutes to get that fire extinguished, and it's going to take a minimum of 15 people to accomplish that. We've actually gone through this many times, and we know that this is the case. We also have this matrix for our other areas that we deal with to know what the response should be depending upon the call that's coming in. Then the final step that we go through is to identify our performance goals for the department. This chart shows an all-risk response at the top, and currently, well, the standard that we have is five minutes and 40 seconds, and we are currently running five minutes and 34 seconds. For fires in an urban setting, to have all the units there, the standard is nine minutes and 30 seconds, and we're currently running eight minutes and 25 seconds. These are nationally accepted standards that we have actually tweaked and adjusted to better fit our, better fit our response areas. So we're doing very well to the national norms, and we think that these response times are going to get even better. I think what you've seen in the standard of cover document, there's a, on page, I believe it's page 42, is the national standards matrix where there's a standard and a, or a benchmark, a baseline and a benchmark. And the benchmark is what we're shooting for. On page 43, we, I believe we have those, and then on, and the benchmark is our standard. So we have to meet the benchmark, but we're shooting, I'm sorry, that's backwards. We have to meet the baseline, but we're shooting for the benchmark. So because the standard of cover is such an important part of becoming accredited, I want to talk, just make a couple of comments regarding the accreditation process and speak to Councilman Gronky's questions that he had earlier about what, essentially what's in it for us? What good is accreditation doing to the city and the Fire Department? And really, accreditation can be explained simply as a continuous quality improvement process. I mean, that just really captures and sums it all up right there. As you know, we race time on every response. This chart shows the progression of a typical fire with the goal of being the extinguishment of the fire before the eight-minute mark and flashover occurs. Once flashover occurs, flashover is essentially the heating of all of the contents in a room to the point where they all spontaneously ignite. Once flashover occurs, the fire moves very quickly through the rest of the structure. And what we're trying to do is get there before flashover occurs. And I put the blue line in there, that is currently our response time right now on 90% of our calls, so we're actually doing very well getting there before the response time, before the flashover. Also wanted to make note at the bottom of that chart that I, we have a medical response timeline. That follows the progression of a fire timeline very closely, which allows us to be so productive on EMS calls. The timelines are very similar in terms of heart attack and stroke or a room and contents fire relative to us getting there on a certain amount of time to have an impact, to change the course of the loss. So while the fire loss and response times are important benchmarks, there are numerous other facets of the department that we must pay attention to. Obviously, we just don't run to fires and EMS calls. There's a multitude of operations and things that we do. So we need another way to measure ourselves besides just fire loss and response times. And that's what accreditation does for us, or one of the things accreditation does for us. There are 10 categories in the accreditation model, and it measures virtually every aspect of the Fire Department. Within those 10 categories, there are 244 performance indicators that we have to address, and 44 more that are considered core criteria that we actually have to be accomplishing to become accredited. Of the 244, we do not have to be doing all of those, but if we're not, we have to have a plan on how we're going to do that. Within each of the performance indicators, there is a description of the quality and the level of service that we provide in each, for each performance indicator. Then we do an appraisal. In other words, it's what we're doing, meeting the needs of the receiver or the citizens. And then if it's not, what is the plan to address that? How do we, how are we going to fix that? And we also are required to include any references that support that claim that we make in terms of achieving a quality level of service or what the plan is to get there. So what is the benefit to the department and the city? Well, it achieves international recognition. It commits us to a level of performance of continuous quality improvement. It requires us to act on plans for those improvement because they check every year, we have to submit every year an annual compliance report and show what we've done towards improving and meeting those plans that we have in place for the, for the performance indicators where we weren't meeting all of our required level of service. And then it's also an economic development tool. So when developers and retailers come to the city to consider moving here, one of the things that the economic development and redevelopment folks can do is to tout the accreditation of the Fire Department, say, you know, we have a superior public safety service here in the city. And there are not very many departments that can claim that. Currently, there are 242 Fire Departments in the country that are accredited out of several thousand, and it's not an easy thing to get to. And I will caution the council, we're not there yet either, but this is what we're shooting for. We think we're going to get there. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
I think Mr. Gronky has some.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, looking at your maps and so forth, and I notice the coverage was not as great up in the north and eastern section, like you said. Can you speak at all about the fire district and their plans for having a, their own fire station and how that might impact that, or do you know where they're at with that?
The Vista Fire Protection District is currently looking at a couple of areas to build a fire station north, which would improve the response area in the district towards Gopher Canyon Road and that northeastern area. We believe we can move north, build a station up there, up to a mile north of where Station Three is, and actually improve the level of service in that whole area without degrading because of the amount of overlap that we currently have between Station Six and Station Three.
Okay. So as far as your discussions with the district, they're still pursuing that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And would be something that they build and when we staff?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I like the idea when I, when you showed the chart about heart attacks and strokes and life-threatening conditions that were well within the mark. You said four to nine minutes it appeared to be.
Yes.
So I guess the best thing to say is that we've kind of met our goals. I remember when we were coming up with Prop L, and we said what we wanted to do was we wanted to reduce response times, we wanted to address these... we wanted to reduce response times, we wanted to address these medical conditions and so forth, and I think we've moved in that right direction.
I would totally agree. We've made a significant improvement in the response system here.
Okay, okay. And so what does that mean for accreditation? You know, when we talk about accreditation, and you said we're not there yet, what do we need to do?
Well, when I say that we're not there yet, they haven't approved us. We have our documents into them, they're reviewing them now, they'll be doing a site visit sometime in February, they may actually want to talk to one of you.
Okay.
But, so they have to come out.
What do they say, what do we say?
I think that Chief Fisher will thoroughly prep us there.
And, okay.
Yeah, it's not really something you need to prep for, they're just asking general questions, but there will be a team of four people here reviewing what we do and talking to the finance director and all the folks here in the city to be sure that what we said in the document is in fact actually what is happening.
And I just want to clarify too, for those that are out in the audience, that all of our firefighters are trained in paramedics, they're not just basic EMTs, right?
Well, all the firefighters are paramedics. Some of the engineers and captains are also paramedics, but not all the engineers and captains are paramedics. Some, once they got promoted, decided to go to EMT because it's very difficult to maintain your paramedic license if you're not on an ambulance all the time.
Okay.
You have certain CE's and amount of hours that you have to commit to doing that, and when you're a captain, supervisor, and an engineer, you don't have as much opportunity as you do when you're on the ambulance. But all of our firefighters are paramedics, we don't have any EMTs left.
Okay, and I guess the reason I ask the question is because it appears to me that most of the calls are medical reasons. And so you want somebody that's trained as a paramedic going out there and giving out the best service that they can each time they roll out.
Absolutely. And we do have at least one paramedic on every engine, so we have coverage on, paramedic coverage on every unit that we have.
Okay. And since there's so many firefighters in the audience, I just want to thank you for everything you've done. Obviously, we've got to the, we're getting to the place we want to be, I think we're so much further ahead than we were four years ago.
Absolutely.
Three years ago.
And I want to thank the council for the support for all that we could have done without you.
Well, thank you, guys.
Okay, Zed? Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. You've come a long ways from nineteen-twenty-eight, when you had a volunteer fire department then, and in nineteen-forty-five, you actually had three paid firemen here, and you've come a long way. Do you think that when they were establishing everything at that time, they had all these little, different little color charts there in that time?
No.
Or not? But you have come a long way, and I think you've done a great job. Now, I want to ask you a question so people understand, is that when you, when a call comes in, explain to the people how it actually happens. How do you say, three minutes, or four minutes, or six minutes? How do you know that they're actually there in four or six minutes?
Well, it's all done by computer and dispatching. The call comes into PSAP, which is the primary service answering point, typically highway patrol. Highway patrols ask if it's fire, EMS, or fire medical or police emergency. If it's fire or medical, they roll it over to our dispatch center. Dispatch queries the caller, that takes about a minute. Once they get enough information, they tone the stations out. We stop what we're doing, we get dressed, get on the truck. That takes us about two minutes, depending on the call. And it takes us about four to five minutes to drive to the event or to the incident. So we're talking about a six to seven minute, eight-minute response time, total response time.
Now, when you get there, what do you have, some type of stopwatch there, or what do you do?
We do, we have MDCs, mobile data computers, in all the fire engines and ambulances, and when they get on scene, they punch a button and it shows that they're on scene.
And that's how it stops the time, right?
Stops the clock. First unit on scene stops the clock.
Whoever's on scene first stops the clock. Now, let me ask you some questions on, once you get the accreditation through, will that actually, what's the system that they use for less insurance in our area? Would it be less insurance, would the insurance be less for homeowners?
It won't run away.
Pardon?
It won't be right away. There won't be any insurance impacts in the near future.
In the near future?
No.
Do you call near, or what do you call it?
I'm going to guess at least a couple of years.
At least a couple of years, okay.
I know that ISO is working with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. I know they're working with them, and they're trying to figure out how they want to do this, how they want to incorporate the accreditation model into the ISO grading scale, but they have not accomplished that yet.
So in a couple of years, when the insurance goes down, that helps people in our community where they don't have to pay as much insurance, but there probably wouldn't be that much of a savings, would there?
There's not a lot of, well, there's virtually no savings for a residential homeowner, it's mostly business, and there's not a lot of savings. It would be, it would not be a lot. But I think that the thing to remember is, the byproduct of the accreditation process is that we're improving the entire fire department and the service delivery. So even though it's not part of the ISO model, there are things that we're doing that enhances the criteria under the ISO model. So we will benefit. We have an ISO grading coming up next summer, and I expect that we're going to do very well.
Now, when you have a, when you have that type of condition here, that, you know, you're, does it help the sale of property in your area, the values go up any, do you think it would help the values in our community?
Well, that might be, that might be a question for Economic Development Director, I don't.
Well, because if you're credited, why wouldn't, why wouldn't it?
Well, I know there's some value to having an accredited, superior fire department, but in terms of quantifying the value going up in a home, I'm not sure I'm really qualified to do that.
Okay. Now, a question, since this has been up, and people have been reading that it was coming up. I have a lot of calls about why do you have to have, and I think we all get this question, is why do you have to have three or four trucks out there on a call? A person is, has an accident, why do you have to have a fire truck there? Can you explain that so that the public on TV can understand that? Because my feeling about it is that when the time comes, I want the protection there, especially when my life is dependent, my life, you know? And so would you explain why you have to have that, so they understand that?
Well, currently, the dispatch center has a defined response plan for every event. And in the case that you're just talking about, like in an automobile crash, you need to have an ambulance there for the folks that are injured, you'll need an engine there to help extricate those folks, you may need another engine there for fire control, and if there's more than one car involved, you may need another group. So you need the appropriate number of folks, just like on the residential fire, you need fifteen. On a auto crash, on a car crash, with two vehicles involved and about four or five people, we have a matrix that shows we need twenty-one people on the scene to handle that. And so there's a defined number of folks that we need to have on the scene to carry out the different tasks that have to be completed pretty much simultaneously.
Chief, maybe you could explain an EMS call scenario with an engine and an ambulance?
Well, and this is a question that I get every time we talk about this. Why do we send an engine with an ambulance on an EMS call? Typically, when we get on a call for a heart attack or a stroke or a major medical event, you have two paramedics on an ambulance. Those two paramedics are taking care of the patient. But then the patient has to get from wherever they are, and typically, they're in the back bedroom upstairs and down the hall. And typically, they weigh about three hundred pounds, two fifty, and typically...
Not only that much.
No. But that's what seems to work out. And if we put you on a fifty-pound stretcher with a cardiac monitor and an oxygen bottle, and you may get to that number pretty quickly. So you've got people who are taking care of the patient, you need the other folks who are going to help carry them down, because two people can't take care of the patient and carry somebody down a flight of steps. Now, so it's really, essentially, it's really a matter of accomplishing a number of tasks simultaneously, which the patient needs to have done in very short fashion so that they can get to the hospital. So it's just simply a matter of needing to accomplish too many tasks and having enough hands on the scene to do that. And with an ambulance with two people, that's not enough. And if you look around the area for jurisdictions that don't have ambulance service, they still respond to a fire truck, because you've got to get folks there on the scene to help the ambulance crews who are treating the patient. And typically, the fire truck gets there first. We don't have ambulances in every station, so, but we do have fire trucks in every station. So we get, we send the closest unit to the scene to stabilize the patient, and the ambulance may be a few minutes behind, but that wouldn't be the best service to the customer if we just sent the ambulance and didn't send the fire truck, especially when they're sitting in the fire station waiting for a call. So I hope that helps.
Well, a couple more questions, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. I got a call from a lady named Betty Curtis who sells real estate. Her husband had somewhat a heart problem, they live out there in Gopher Canyon area, and he went down, and she immediately called, and it took, she said, no more than three minutes for your fire department to get out there and work on her husband, and she really appreciated, she wanted me to say that, because you were lickety-split there fast. And so I want to compliment your organization for, you know, really responding to, especially Ed, Ed's been a longtime friend of mine for years, and you did a great job for him. Now, I also want to thank the fire department for all the volunteering that they've done over the years, as far as back as I can remember as a kid living here in Vista. The new ones here, I know, don't remember me back then, but the thing is, I remember them doing all this volunteer things, especially during Christmas, they did baskets back then, you know, and so they've really been part of this community. The city here, with Rita's management skills and her leadership, has had this city as a family, it seems like it's family here, you know, and everybody works together. What I've learned about the fire department is that all your gentlemen and the ladies that work there, it seems like they have a real close family tie, and that is great in a community, and I also would continue to tell young people to join, try and join the fire department because it's a great organization here in Vista. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, I'm going back to when you did the standards of coverage before, which is what, four or five years ago?
Yes.
Refresh me, if you will, on percent of our calls that are actually medical as opposed to fire?
About seventy-five, eighty percent.
Does that change?
No, it's pretty constant.
So seventy-five to eighty percent? Okay. And then, I remember there was an issue previously before we had the potential for bringing in new stations, that you were just out, all your equipment was out virtually, you just didn't have the resources. Are we seeing any decline now in terms of everybody out, where we actually have some reserves? Because a secondary part of that question was, I remember you told us that you could only handle, say, two incidents really fully, and if you got a third one in, it might, it just might be overwhelming. How do we rank today in that?
Well, you still handle, can only handle two incidents. We can handle larger incidents than we could before. The issue that you speak to is an issue of reliability, where we had fifty-two percent of our calls being simultaneous calls, where we had to send, respond to two calls at the same time. The bad news is that we're now up to sixty-two percent of our calls are simultaneous calls. The good news is that our reliability and our response times have gone down. So what that means is, is with the extra resources that we've added and the repositioning of the stations, we can add, we can respond to those extra calls now and still get there in a timely fashion without having to pull units from way out of district somewhere else. So it's, the placement of the stations give us really good redundancy, and it's worked out to where even though the simultaneous calls have increased, our reliability has also increased.
Okay. And tell me about mutual aid and drop the borders, how well are those programs working, and where do you see them going? Do you think you can sustain them?
Well, I think so. I think the border drop program is working really well. We had some bumps and glitches initially, but if you look at the response maps, they can get to some of the areas in the city much more quickly than we can, and we rely on that. We have a very robust border drop relationship with Oceanside relative to medical and fire calls across the border. You know, we run about a hundred and fifty calls apiece each month back and forth, which is very good, because it would be taking each of those calls a little bit longer to get there if it wasn't for us sharing that border space.
Thank you. Mayor, I just had a couple of specific detail questions. You talked about accreditation in two-hundred-and-forty-some agencies in the country, that's not very many considering it's thousands of agencies. Do we have any local that have achieved this?
We don't have any local, there's the closest one, I believe, is in Orange County.
Orange County, okay. And how often, once you are accredited, which I'm sure you will be, is this reviewed, and then you have to go through that process again?
It's reviewed annually for a compliance report to see what you've accomplished, and then every five years, you do it again.
Okay, okay. You mentioned that the primary receiver of calls is the highway patrol. Last time we had this conversation, they were down thirty-five personnel, they just could not fill the seats, and I think that resulted in really lags before the North County Dispatch was getting the calls. Do you know if that's improved or not, or, and the reason I'm asking is the state just is not functional right now, and I don't know where they are in terms of that service.
That has improved somewhat, I believe, they've handed most of that off to the sheriff's department. Calls that did originate on roadways or cell phones that went to highway patrol, now because of the technology, they pick those up locally, and those go to the sheriff's department, which speeds up the process.
And I understand roughly fifty percent of the phones in the country now are cell phones. Is that, which do you think takes priority in terms of getting response, a cellphone or landline?
Well, I don't think either one takes preference over the other, but the good news about this landline is that they can get a location on that where a cellphone, it's much more difficult.
Okay. And cell phones today all have to, the newer ones all have GPS capability. Do we put out advice to the community that they should turn that feature on in case they're in an accident so they can find them, and can you find them using that?
Well, we can't. I don't know if the call, a lot of times, the calls will triangulate and tell the dispatcher where it's coming from, but if it can't hit at least three towers, it doesn't work well.
Right. So you'd have to have the triangulation.
Uh huh.
But I'm not sure everybody's aware of the fact that, I know some people turn it off because they don't want Martha finding them, but in reality, they should have it on for safety purposes if they ever had to pull that phone up. It would improve.
Could be helpful, yes.
Could be helpful, okay. Dispatch has made huge changes in the last couple of years, and I'm pleased to represent Vista on that board. I see it getting better and better and better, but are we to a point where in sometime in the future, they can differentiate enough within the calls coming in that they can set various levels of responses so that Johnny just broke his arm, you don't need to send it, which is Ms. Lopez's earlier question, two units out to get Johnny, who only weighs a hundred pounds?
That has been the goal for a while. Priority dispatching is something that we've been working on for a while. We hope that, hope to start training this week on the crews, and we hope to put it in place sometime around the first of March. What that will do is that should... What that will do is that should eliminate about 15 percent of our unit movements. In other words, on about 15 percent of the calls, we won't send two units, we'll only send one. Or instead of sending three or four, we might only send two. We'll always send something, but we may be able to reduce that depending on the querying that the dispatcher does with the caller.
And this is something, knowing conservative as you are, you'll do crawl, walk, run before you, you'll test this carefully and make sure...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You'll test the concept carefully, I'm sure, considering how conservative your organization is?
Yes.
Okay. And the last question is just one of concern, and you probably can't answer it until Station One's back in service, but what impact has the Sprinter had on response times?
I haven't been able to really gauge that at this point, but I do know, just anecdotally, that we've had units caught behind the Sprinter, sitting there waiting on an emergency call.
Waiting to get through?
Yes.
Would it help if you had a link where you could go straight into the dispatch for North County Transit and have them stop before they get to an intersection?
That's possible.
Let's explore that.
Okay.
I think that's a possibility that could be done, to have them just stop in line and just stay out of the station so you can get clearance on the crossovers, because I can see sometimes it seems just horrible, just a village in particular. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter.
Well, a lot of my questions got answered, and the responses were good. And I do support the firemen. I think that they do a wonderful job in our city. But probably the elephant in the room is the constant staffing issue, and so I thought maybe I would just ask you, because we're talking about the accreditation, and I'm wondering if we have increased simultaneous calls, you know, if, how is that going to affect, I mean, if we don't have constant staffing? I think, does constant staffing affect the accreditation at all? Will it affect it if we don't have that?
No.
Wouldn't affect it at all?
No.
So are the response times related at all, directly connected to having constant staffing, having engines staffed at all times?
Well, constant staffing is really mutually exclusive. I mean, it really doesn't have anything to do with the accreditation model. How you staff units, it doesn't really apply to the accreditation model. The accreditation model looks at, can you get the number of folks to a certain point in a certain amount of time?
Response times.
And mitigate the incident in a fashion that saves lives and property. So constant staffing really doesn't apply in this particular situation. I mean, that's a staffing model. It's not really a response, a response model.
Would the staffing affect, if you didn't staff something and you had calls that you couldn't send somebody to, wouldn't that affect your response times?
Well, if we don't, if we don't have people staffing units, it could have an effect depending on where the unit wasn't staffed, if we had a whole bunch not staffed. I mean, I'm not exactly following you on where you're going with this, but if you have, you know, if you didn't have three or four stations staffed, obviously, it's going to have an impact. But if you don't have one unit staffed, if it's, if you don't have one unit staffed, it may not affect anything, depending on what the boarding agencies do, where the call is, and all those other issues that come along. It's much more, it's much more complicated than just saying that not having constant staffing would affect response times.
Okay. It just was a question, so, okay.
Good. Okay, the last thing, I just have a comment. We've thrown out a lot of thanks tonight, and I'd like to thank the citizens of Vista who approved Proposition L. I think that was one of the greatest things that I've seen in a community ever since I've been in local government. I know that it's gratifying to me to go, to realize that what we promised has taken place, and that because the citizens of this community are willing to sacrifice, and sacrificed greatly, and that we've been able to provide additional fire personnel, we've been able to provide the two new stations and get the other one remodeled. And I think that's something that this community should be very proud of. And so I think a big hats off goes to the citizens of this community for what they've done. Okay, if there are no further questions, the action would be to adopt City Council Resolution Number 2010, next in order, approving the 2010 report. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and it's for recreation and community service facility rental and program fees. Mr. Fort Mueller.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Bill Fort Mueller, Assistant Director, Recreation and Community Services. Tomerite Isdunamyster, the Management Analyst for our department. Before you tonight are the proposed fees for programs offered by the Recreation and Community Services Department. Since raising our fees at the end of the last fiscal year, with the exception of the Moonlight Amphitheater, we have experienced a slight decrease in attendance and facility rentals. As a result, we are proposing modest or no changes in most areas to encourage continued community use. Staff recommends the following changes to the Wave Water Park fee schedule. Increase the admission fee for 42 inches and taller and a spectator rate by 95 cents to $16.95. Increase the admission fee for under 42 inches, the Vista Unified School District group rate and the city employee rate by 95 cents to $12.95. Increase after 3:00 PM admission by $1.95 to $9.95. Decrease the military senior rate by 5 cents to $11.95. Increase season pass rates for four or more people and individuals by $4.95 to $69.95 and $74.95 respectively.
Could we, someone close the back door so that we could have a little more quiet in here, please?
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Decrease the scout badge program by 5 cents to $17.95. Decrease the admission for teen family night by 5 cents to $7.95. Increase the water pool rental by $10, raising it to $75 per hour. Increase our CPR first aid classes by $10, raising them to $50. Then increase swim lessons by $5, raising them to $65. Increase aqua camp by $5, raising that fee to $125. Increase small and large cabana rentals by $5, raising them to $45 and $65 respectively. And then introduce two new programs, early season pool and ripities, pool use program for $7.95, and a new junior lifeguard program for $140. These proposed fees are estimated to generate an additional $82,000 based on average attendance numbers from this past season. These increases are necessary to offset anticipated increased costs in utilities, chemicals, insurance, and equipment replacement. In the Recreation Division, we recommend the following changes. The Rancho Buena Vista Adobe Summer Camp fees by $3 for both residents and non-residents. These would go from $59 and $71 to $62 and $74 respectively. Increase the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe Scout Program $1, which would go from $9 to $10. We propose an increase in parking fees for the Highland Games from $3 to $4. Also an increase for the 4th of July parking from $5 to $8. I apologize, there's a misprint in the body of the agenda report that missed quotes a different figure, but the $5 to $8 fee is correct in the exhibits and on the resolution.
Okay.
It's estimated that these fee increases will generate an additional $5,300 in revenue. We are recommending park and facility rentals remain the same as this past year. Last year, we raised the fees 22 percent. What we are adding are fees for the new community room at the Civic Center. These fees are comparable to the fees charged for the Park Terrace Cafe at the Gloria McClellan Senior Center. Group A resident groups, such as senior groups, youth groups, co-sponsored recreation programs will be $57 an hour. Group B resident groups, such as social service organizations, service organizations, recreational and/or educational activities, and nonprofit organizations will be $86 an hour. Group C resident general user groups and individuals, such as family group gatherings where the general public is invited and privately hosted parties, non-resident social service and nonprofit organizations will be $143 an hour. And Group D non-residents in groups A, B, and C and commercial operations, such as company picnics and for-profit enterprises, will be $200 an hour. Staff is estimating additional $15,000 to $20,000 a year in revenue annually being generated by this facility. It is proposed that fees for the moonlight summer and winter seasons increase $1 for all ticket prices, with the exception of the lawn seating during the summer season. Staff also proposes adding a new ticket category, Student Rush, for the winter season at the AVO. With this category, students with ID may come to the box office 30 minutes before curtain and purchase a ticket for $15. This is done down in San Diego, and it's a quite popular program, and provides the students a discounted, extremely discounted price. We are also seeking council permission to provide promotional ticket prices on an ad needed basis for promotional opportunities effective March 1st of this year. It is estimated that the proposed increases in ticket prices will generate an additional $40,000 during the summer season and $9,000 for the winter season. That concludes my report. In addition to Ms. Meester and myself, the respective division managers are also here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, the public hearing is open, and I don't have anyone that wishes to speak in this public hearing. So are there any questions or comments by council, or is there a motion? Go ahead and make a motion. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead. Did you have a question? Okay, Mr. Campbell.
I'm so simple-minded, I don't deal well in 95 cents. I sort of wonder, what was the thought behind not just rounding it up to the dollar?
Well, it's a, I'll admit, it's a marketing ploy. It's typical for the water park industry. They keep, try and keep just below, like, $60, $95. We're just below $17. So it gives us a little bit of an edge, it seems. You know, we're just not quite at that, at that park, you know, at that mark, that retail mark.
Okay.
It's pretty common, I guess, in the, you know, in the water park industry that the pricing remains at that level.
Okay. What is a senior? Is a senior a senior, senior all throughout our system here, or for different venues that are different senior ages?
I believe it's the same, it's the same rate throughout. It's...
What, what age?
I'll have to ask Natalie, Natalie Livingston, the manager. Is it 60 or better?
60 or better. Would I qualify?
I'm not sure what your... Obviously not.
I resemble that. Okay. Student Rush was, if I were a Palomar student or I was a student from the adult school, would that, could I qualify?
As long as you have a student ID, yes.
Okay, that's good. And why didn't you ask for permission on the summer season for discount ticket pricing for promotional purposes, such as trying to use up excess capacity on the slowest night or something? Why wouldn't you want that?
Well, the promotional ticket is for summer and winter. It's for both.
Okay, just in the winter season, though, you had a special notation of requesting promotional opportunities on an as-needed basis?
Well, it was effective March 1st, which allowed us to start with this winter and summer season, but it'd be ongoing for both seasons.
Okay.
As opportunities come to provide special, you know, promotions, there's certain publications, if we can, we can put ads in there and work some arrangements. It gives us a little more flexibility.
That's true, not Mr. Johnson, the day that he may choose or not choose to talk to you about. Okay. I think we are still the best value anywhere, thanks to Kathy Bronbacher and Dan Kays and the outstanding people that we have. I was fortunate to go to two shows during the holidays. I did not have the good seats in the house, but I paid over $50 each, thanks to Ticketmaster and add-on fees and things of that sort. And I just think that we need to do everything we can to make sure the region understands the quality of the programs we have here, so thank you for what you do. I move for approval, Mayor.
Well, we have one more person that wants to ask a question, Mr. Lopez, or make a statement.
Real quick. The 95, the 95 is just almost like you're learning from restaurants, is that $10.95 for a meal, it's, actually, it's $11, just about so. But the increases that you've done, you've kept them down, and we need to do that for our community here. When you look at what gas and your electric is going up, with your fees with your water and all that, it's just, you've done a great job, and you've kept the level of service up as much as you can for what you have. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gronke, did you have questions, or did you?
Should I go back and try again?
Okay.
Go back to closing public hearing and move for the approval of the changes.
Mr. Campbell, did you second that? Okay. And you closed the public hearing, right? Okay. Did everyone please vote? And that was passed unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and it's land acquisition and building lease for 325 and 327, or 2327, South Santa Fe Avenue.
Mayor, I'm a light on.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the attorney, where do I sit on this particular one? I'd like to stay here, but where do I sit?
I believe, Mr. Lopez, that we'd previously discussed that it would be appropriate to excuse yourself on this item.
Didn't you ever change your mind?
Rarely.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boy Rawlings, Director of Redevelopment and Housing. And with me tonight is Cecilia Berandin with a very short presentation.
Thank you. The transaction before you this evening is to approve a purchase and sales agreement and related building lease for the acquisition of property commonly known as 325, 327, South Santa Fe. This will help advance the revitalization of the Paseo Santa Fe Corridor. The property is currently owned by Richard and Helen Jaden and consists of an 11,325 square foot lot with approximately 4,500 square foot retail building that is divided into two units of equal size. The purchase price of $825,000 is based on an independent third-party appraisal. Funds to complete this transaction will come from redevelopment and housing set-aside funds. As the intended use of the site is to develop mixed-use project, including affordable housing units, the use of housing set-aside funds is appropriate. It is important to note that redevelopment funds, including housing set-aside funds, are limited to redevelopment projects and cannot be used for general fund purposes. However, successful redevelopment projects often result in an increase of general fund monies. Currently, the sellers operate a picture framing business at 325 and lease 327 to a tenant who operates an auto upholstery business. Both have expressed interest in continuing to operate these businesses after the commission closes escrow. As proposed, the commission will lease the entire site back to the Jaden's. The lease is for a 12-month term and can be terminated with 30-day notification. The proposed monthly rent is $1,500. In closing, staff recommends approval of the purchase and sales agreement, which includes the short-term lease. This concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Rawlings and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is now open, and we have one individual that wishes to speak, Alejandro Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Sanchez is not here. Okay, seeing that there are no others, I'll entertain comments and questions from the City Council. Mr. Lopez is not here, so we can take his name off the list. Mr. Gronke.
Thank you, Mayor. You said that there's an annual lease on the property between you and the person who owns the property at this present time, so, and you can get out of that within 30 days? Either party can?
Yes.
Any financial hardship on either side if they terminate the lease early?
No, there would not be.
Okay. I just want to state that I did talk to the applicant on a couple occasions. This has come back before this council, once or twice. So I just want to state that I did talk to the applicant, and that won't affect my vote on this.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. A question for the attorney, or Mr. Rawlings. At the end of the lease period for this, the temporary lease of this property back to the seller, what are the terms for relocation?
We've structured the, both the purchase and the lease to address relocation, and it's mutually agreed by all the parties that there would not be relocation assistance associated with this, and that's part of the reason for the discounted lease rate.
And that's incorporated into the agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and I, because I see you have an estoppel there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move for the adoption and approval of this item.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that is unanimous with Mr. Lopez not in attendance at this, for this particular item. Okay, that concludes that public hearing item. And Mr. Lopez, if you'd please take your place at the dais, we'll go ahead and start... And Mr. Lopez, if you please take your place at the dais, we'll go ahead and start. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Again, Mr. Sanchez had submitted a request to speak, he hasn't come back, has he? Mr. Sanchez? Okay. Next is Mr. Chris Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Chris Hammond, I'm the President of the Vista Firefighters Association. First off, I'd like to thank you very much for your kind words about the firefighters and the fire service in general this evening. It really means a lot to those who serve this community. I'd also like to thank several members from neighboring fire departments for coming out here tonight to see what happened in here and pay attention to what happened. And if I may, I'd like to address the question posed to the fire chief by Mayor Protem Ritter regarding constant staffing. There wasn't really an explanation as to what constant staffing is in that conversation and what it means to this city. Constant staffing does exactly two things. It guarantees that each and every fire engine and ambulance will be staffed 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. That is the level of service that is guaranteed by those two words. It also means that these engines and ambulances are run in the most cost-effective manner available. There's been studies done on this, and each one has come to prove that constant staffing for a department this size is the most cost-effective way to manage your employees. I have to take exception, with all due respect, to the chief's remarks that eliminating that guarantee doesn't necessarily mean an increase in response times. To me, the equation's simple. If you take units out of the rotation, you force other units to pick up the calls that they would run, therefore, you decrease their reliability, a word that was thrown around quite a bit during the chief's presentation. So, if you're decreasing the reliability of all your units, you're causing units to come from farther away and from possibly other cities. And that's why it's very important to us, for the community that we serve, to keep this formula in place so that we can continue to reach the maximum number of patients and structures, people in need, in the fastest time possible. Thank you.
Okay, the next individual is Michael Booth.
Members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I noticed in the paper the other day that you were considering putting in three additional traffic lights around the city of Vista. I was disappointed by the fact that the intersection of Oak and East Vista Way was not included. I came to the City Council five years ago to press for a traffic light at that location because my son was...
Mr. Booth, I think that's already approved, and it's already, and it will happen this year.
It's going to happen this year.
Yes, it will. That's already been approved. What they were talking about, that was, I think, the number one on our approval list, and I think that one, as I said before, according to Mr. Johnson, that is under, it's going through the process of plans, specification, bids, and all that kind of stuff, so, it will be constructed this year.
I was told by John Conley that that was in process over a year ago. Is that...
Well, unfortunately, the process...
So, it has been approved?
Takes a little while. Why don't we have Mr. Johnson respond to that, please?
The reason why it's been delayed is because we are waiting for the SDG&E overlay of East Vista Way, and at such time, then we'll improve the intersection with signals, so it should be done later this year.
Okay, all right.
The three that were talked about have nothing to do with what this particular signal?
What I've realized recently is that the people still use that crosswalk that was blacked out, and the reason they do, and it's elderly, and it's women with small children, it's because the bus stop is on the west side of East Vista Way. Going from residential to reach the bus stop, for those people, they go the shortest route, and it's very dangerous.
Mr. Booth, we couldn't agree with you more, and we're very anxious to see that take place as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that concludes oral communications. Next, we will have remarks from members of the staff. Mr. Piper, do you have any remarks this evening?
This evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I forgot to acknowledge the fact that you're here this evening, that Mrs. Geldert had a personal emergency and had to take care of that, so we're happy to have you with us tonight, and thank you for your attendance. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just want to mention to the audience that the Fourth Vista Citizens Leadership Academy will be occurring starting on March 3rd, which is a Wednesday, going through mid-April. And so, if citizens are interested in learning more about local government and how we manage our different departments, they're encouraged to call our communications officer, Andrea McCullough, at 760-726-1340, extension 1438.
Thank you. We'll start this time with Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll start in the middle next time.
Happy New Year to all of you, and I'm predicting that this next year, that things will be better with the economy. I'm sure the state will hopefully figure out what they're going to be doing, and, you don't think so, huh?
What have you been dreaming?
No, I haven't been drinking tonight, but I just have a lot of faith that this next year will be a good year for all of us and for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Campbell.
Well, I wish you hadn't said that.
Why?
Mrs. Ritter and I just spent a couple hours down at Sand Egg with projections, and the realistic suggestion will be that we'll be very happy if we could stabilize this next year, particularly the key issue is jobs, and where the jobs being created, if at all, and the one-time stimulus money that may show a bump in terms of job creation goes away, and a lot of agencies are using that one-time money just to keep going with the current staffing. So, Mrs. Ritter has a better idea of what's happening in the mortgage markets, but it's not pretty, and we're still, we're seeing collapse now of commercial buildings in San Diego that last year had one price, and this year it's 50% of that price, because people simply can't pay their mortgages, and they're, so we're facing, I think, some interesting challenges going forward. We're told by Sand Egg, putting my North County Transit head on, that between now and June, we need to find another $1 million because of a cutback in sales tax collections. And on Sunday, Metropolitan Transit Services cut out $7 million worth of Sunday transit. So, we're decimating public transit at a time when it should be better supported in order to cut back on air pollution and provide services to the public that can't afford to have cars, or may have difficulty getting to their work, but I'm very concerned about the state of California and where that's all going, and I agree with you, let's hope for a good year, but it's going to be...
I have faith, that's what I have.
Tighten your belt.
And I think we will do it.
Tighten your belt.
Mrs. Ritter.
Do you want me to give you more bad news? Well, I can just tell you a couple of things, because I jotted them down when they had the economist. He said, "This recession is three times worse than the 1990 recession," and as of November, San Diego was down 71,000 jobs, and he said, "We're equally as bad as other areas." And he said, "The interesting thing was the duration of the joblessness has risen 80%. People are staying unemployed much longer than they were in the last recession, and the average number of hours worked per week is 33 hours, which is an all-time low historically." It's because, you know, a lot of people are furloughed, or people are cut back, they've cut people back on their hours at work, so, then, so that, you know, everybody's sharing the pain, otherwise, they said, it would be even worse, the unemployment numbers would be even worse, and right now, they're about 10.2 in November, as of November, so, anyway, but I'm looking forward to a better year, and it's a good time to buy commercial real estate, because, you know, everything is much cheaper.
Mr. Gronky.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I hate to parade on your reign, but I have two things to celebrate tonight. The first one is, it's been 15 years since I've had my liver transplant, as of this date, and I feel very good. The second thing I want to celebrate is that we took a tour of the new City Hall yesterday, Ms. Ritter, and the Community Development Association and some other people, and while we're out on that, I suggested that we honor someone, and Ms. Ritter had a better suggestion, and I think we should go ahead and do that, or think about it in any way, and propose it. I think we should honor our mayor, who has devoted his life to public service, and I think really was the person behind Prop Bell that really got us our new fire stations, got us our new fields and our new City Hall, and I'd like to think that we named our new chambers after Mr. Morris Vance, because I really think the mayor has shown a degree of leadership that has enhanced the city over his tenure, and I'm proud to say that I work with him.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Gosh, I don't have anything else to say, except thank you. And it's been a pleasure working with you all, and believe me, I mean, this is, honestly, this has been a great council, and, you know, I've had a lot of experience with city councils over the years, and this has been a great council and a great staff to work with. I think we're very fortunate in this community at this time, and so that we're looking forward to some, an upturn, hopefully, and I know that it's going to be a sacrifice for a lot of people over the next few years, but I think this community is going to come out even a lot better than it was before we went into the recession. And I think the new facilities that we've been able to do with the City Hall, the two fire stations, and the Moonlight Amphitheater, and the sports park, I think, is going to give the people of this community really a feeling that they can have some pride in this community, and that it is really a community that has looked out for their benefit and for their, for everything that really makes a community what it should be, and I think Vista has really benefited from that, and I'm really looking forward to living in the community for several years. Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.